Public discussion on any item on the agenda. Conference call with Dr. Deckman.
Morning, man.
Good morning, Lee.
Dr. Deckman.
Les, this is Lenito. We are in our meeting.
Well, good morning. How is everybody?
Fine.
We, um, I have three people... Actually, I take that back. I have two people that have checked on our contracts with AT&amp;T. Mine is coming due... There's three due. Mine's coming due in March. The court clerks is coming due in April. And the assessors is coming due in May.
And we don't have one.
And the commissioner's office does not have one.
Okay. So commissioner's office doesn't have a contract?
It's out of contract.
It force?
It automatically rolls over.
The executive officer told me there's no contract.
There's an agreement but no contract.
Everybody does the same agreement.
Well, there's a couple of ways we can do it. We can do a rolling deployment to coincide with the expiration of the contracts. Or my preference would be to go ahead and put everything in place and make sure it works as it's supposed to. And then we would start building you following the expiration of the contract with the existing provider. So that way we can deploy and test everything and make sure it works properly, make sure there's no issues. And then when your contract expires, we can just port those numbers over from AT&amp;T.
I had a couple officers ask some questions. They're wanting to know if whichever way we go, how... What is the... How soon will it switch?
Uh, well, that depends on you guys. What we do is we would provide you with the letter of authorization, LOA, and you would fill that out. And that would list all of the numbers that you want to port over. Now, it could be just the main number for each office or it could be all of the numbers associated with the phones. Tell it up to where you want to. But what we would do is then, we think about 30 days to process that so it's ready to port. So you fill out the letter of authorization. That gives us the authority then to request those numbers from AT&amp;T and then port them over when we're ready to switch over to our system. So we can do it in a staged scenario or we can do it all at once, depending on how you guys want to proceed.
One more question was, um, are you guys gonna be... Do you have to run new phone lines? You know, we had talked to you about the crackling in some of our lines.
Right. No, we do not utilize the existing conference on Chinese switches. Our institution will take down the building. We utilize the bandwidth on your internet.
Okay.
So we use that bandwidth for voice so that your voice transmissions get the priority of the data. If I did a test, there at your desk, we need to head in. I was giving up 30 down, which is sufficient. It's more than sufficient to support the voice transport.
I forgot about you doing that. Yes, you're... I forgot about that. I'm sorry, Les. I forgot about that one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, as far as the contracts commissioners, mine is $15 a line for times however many months we have to buy it out. It's not a huge amount, but that's up to you guys. Same way with the...
Yours is in July.
Mine's... Mine's the soonest. Mine's in March.
March.
Court clerks is in April. And assessors is in May. I did not ever get back from with Valerie.
That wouldn't amount to much of a penalty.
No. Yeah. Yeah.
As far as the penalty goes, I mean, I'm calling it a penalty.
Right.
To buy them out. I would say, in my opinion, it would be...
I don't mind being the line to get it done.
Buy them out, do it all at once and get it done and have it over with.
I don't mind buying mine out. We can do whatever you guys say.
Is that using your channel for internet?
Yes.
Is that the same one that I have downstairs? It goes out at least once a month for a few minutes.
Ours is different than yours. I don't know about you guys'. These will automatically roll over to a designated phone line or your cell phone if the internet goes out. So...
Well, my computers don't go somewhere else. I'm just saying.
Right. No, I'm talking about this phone system does.
It does go out occasionally.
Yeah. The phone system automatically...
It's not 100%. I had to call ambulance and fire out on my phone the other day.
But no, we're not touching anything different on that internet and we're not touching you guys' lines.
Oh, I know. I was just making sure you knew the internet goes out occasionally. But you have this internet. I mean, different accounts, but...
Well, after here, and we'll decide. But I would say that we're probably gonna... If we're gonna do the thing, we'll do it and get it hooked up and get it going without any hesitation. I mean, you said 30 days. That's fine. But like her deal with March, 30 days, we're not gonna have much of any.
No. Not much of them.
Even April won't be bad. I want any of it. So I would say...
Are you talking about the early termination fees?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that you're sort of close with some of the files. I would think that would be that much in terms of your ETF.
All right.
Well, Les, I called all three of the references that you gave me and they all were very pleasant to deal with and said that it was very, very painless. And one of the companies, it was the one with the, um, the Domino?
Yeah, Domino, food and fuel.
He was even saying that they had different locations in different towns even. He said they had like 30 different locations. And he said anytime they had any problem, they called you. It was fixed within just a little bit of time. And they all were very, very positive on them. So...
Well, I'm pleased to hear that. Yeah, the companies we work with, if we've deployed these phones and are very well versed in how our system works. And they can even provide you guys support in the event that you have questions or concerns about any other issues. They're willing to talk to you guys about, you know, this is how the system works. This is how we set it up. There's the versatility and the flexibility in the system. It's so powerful that it gives you guys total control over how you wanna route your communications. And the big problem is it makes you resolve where you call in and have to tell the caller to call another department. You can simply transfer that call or with the auto attendant, it breaks the call and then they select the appropriate extension or a department.
Okay. Um, I had a couple of the offices that... Just to let you kind of know, they may add a couple more lines.
Okay.
Is that gonna be... I mean, just let you know kind of ahead of time what ones we're gonna add, a couple more lines?
No problem. Not at all.
I had an assessor said she wanted to add something. And there's somebody else that I don't remember who it was.
I knew the assessor. Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we get into this and we're in it sometime and we wanna maybe switch the way we've got it set up, is that a problem to change something after we use it a while?
No, it's not a problem at all. She has... We can add new on the portal. There's a portal access to your ability to change the configuration, change assignments on any of the phones. Typically, what we do is get a list of when we launch it, we get a list of all the email addresses and we want to associate the email address with each phone. And if it's appropriate, there might be some phones that need a email address associated with it. But that gives the phone identity. It has its own ID address. And then your user ID is associated with that phone. That would be the person that has the email associated with the device. You can change those assignments anytime. You can change numbers. You can change the way the calls are routed into the building. You can fill out your failover so that in the event the internet goes down, then the calls are automatically routed to specific numbers you designate. And you can change those at any time. It's not... If I like to have the call app and said, "We need this changed or that changed," you guys can do it yourself. So my recommendation would be you to designate someone in your organization that would be the admin or the person that has the authority to do those changes. And you guys just go through them to handle it.
Okay. That answers my question.
All right, Les. I'll email you back this afternoon and kind of let you know what we decided, what the commissioners decided, and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Well, you guys have your thing.
You too. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Les.
It's just a service order that he contracted. He gave us. It's not that, um, letter of authorization. So, but this at least accepts that 750 insulation and the 715 a month.
Yeah, I got that. I've been picking it up.
I got it. I got it here. But you guys do whatever you wanna do. Consider it on there that we can have the conference call and the possible action on the contracts if you wanna do it or we can put it off, whatever you guys want to do. It's right here.
I know we do it. Can't we? Can't we, our system? As long as he doesn't say anything about AT&amp;T, we'll be all right.
Put the signature there on that top page.
A move accepted. Off the report. I'll second it. All in favor? Road crossing for me.
You have to be blanking.
Blanket first. Two threes.
One. That's four.
Up here.
Uh, no. Up here. All of them. It's signed up early up here. Let's think of when you approve them.
Black tomorrow, isn't it right?
There's a three.
There's a three. I found your own.
They sign the top, don't they?
Yes.
Except by...
Hold up. Yep. Some more here. The top two are sheriffs don't sign those. The ones below are, um, ambulance district and county general.
I need it all done this time.
The top two, no. No rest of them. Yes.
Yeah. Rest of them. Yeah. Yeah. There are two there. Okay. Let's get here.
He took our funnel, I guess, or two days ago. So again...
Yeah.
Yeah. The qualifications, we didn't want to see them. They didn't have to.
I don't really... I don't wanna say we took it away because when I came to visit mom and dad, they already had their bad side before even asking.
That's funny.
And then they... The train goes, "He said yes, if you can stay the night." She wouldn't say no anyways.
Right.
You're definitely not... You can't say no. They had an alternative.
We had to wait, wait and wait. They must've got out of church, waited. Nothing, no kids. I'm like, if you cannot come with kids on time... Well, you didn't have kids. We had to eat without you.
I think the moms did sound like they might've been moving stuff on Saturday, if that's part of it. I just... If I was trying to say, if anyone wants to buy a house if they don't have to be in right away?
I think that's nuts.
I would say. That's what I told Jan.
I don't want to go with my mother-in-law.
No.
I'm only going for a month.
Well, it's gonna be a full house because you still have the two boys.
The boys.
I don't know where Caitlin's living. But if she comes to...
Is that where her apartment is?
She might. I don't know. And you have all the Trent's family. I told Trent, I said, "The other downside is they're gonna clean and they're gonna take what they want."
Yep.
The rest is gonna be... The other... Jessica's gonna be... He's like, "You don't understand."
All those...
All right. Also...
Forty years of...
All right. He said they've already taken a ton to dump.
Forty years of accumulation is gonna be a...
Ain't more than you got a baby running off the bed.
You're also banking on the fact that they actually buy... You can get a house where they want it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't sell my house, I know for sure, but...
Yeah.
I don't think I'll trouble getting a house, but...
Yeah, that's a mess. Get another three now. Holy smokes. The cracks. Oh, my goodness. You surely got some more under there. Oh, yep. There's a three.
Change your victim to my team.
Crap, I even got to split this one off. You know, you get it worth that, man. Well, be fair about this. Yeah, that's a little better. Now we're in.
Why don't you? Be careful. You might be disappointed.
Yeah. Like I'm... Figured out I didn't have much activity left. I'll move. We accept the road crossing. I'll second it. Man, he's got him in all in favor. All right. Declaration of Surplus for District Number... John here, Trico. That driver. Oh, that's... That's you. Is that thing you give?
Jay, don't forget. There's some...
No, it's all right.
It's a service. That's a penalty hitch.
Oh.
They used to pull... What are we on? Back Trico or...
We're on the Trico, yeah. I need a trailer, but I need a pedalway to the trailer.
Yeah, we used to pull it back over there.
You wanna do them all? We accept the motion and therefore we can do them all.
And they never meant to pull us in front of you. It's not the same.
It's a penalty hitch, you say? I'm getting around one, too. Paul wants to open two, put it back together and take it the opposite before somebody forgets. I'll move. We accept the surplus.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Written quotes for cleaning up for reg yard in L.A. in a different tree.
I think they had just had one that come in. They called multiple times to several of them and nobody ever brought back. Just another that has came before and cleaned up the yard. Did a good job last time. Somewhere, anywhere around the front altar hill sign up.
Anywhere on the...
Yeah, just anywhere on the phone.
It's outside.
They did back up a little bit, I'd say.
It's... Your service wanted to know if it is with... ECO Alliance? And... Again, come in within a couple of weeks?
Well, that's one of the things that they said they'd have it done within 45 days.
Yes, and then they'll finish it within 45 days. The long iron average is $25 a ton?
Yeah.
And, um... I guess if they agree to clean it all up?
A move accepted.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Detention transportation claim for fiscal year 2019.
Which needs to be signed by who Jay on a part as a contractor? We're the ones that have the contract with them because we're not a drug supervisor. So I filled in the phone number on that.
I need a motion on that. I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Alcohol and Drug Test Incorporated Service and Proximity.
After making a phone call about a question on drug testing, Dale had the conversation with them that to be in ODOP, to be in compliance with ODOP and be in compliance with federal, we need to randomly test our CDL drivers at least four times a year. I did ask about if this company is kind of aware of the process that needs to go through on the marijuana. Something comes back on positive on that. And they said, Dale said, yes, they were. And that I think it is 30 cents a mile. They'll come to a neutral location for the county of all three districts sign up with it. Garfield County uses this company. Major County uses this company. And there's several other counties that use this company. They just need from us to listen to CDL drivers and the non-CDL drivers. And they will set it all up. They will contact... There's a paper in there that has your point of contact people. They need two. They will contact the point of contact person on the day before and say, "We will be up there tomorrow at such and such time." On the day of the random test, they will call the people on the point of contacts and say, "I need these people for the random test." That way they do not know until that morning.
They correspond. That would tell our working days.
Right. They did the same test right over here.
They do the same thing over here.
And they send them to the same place. And they told me over there, "Oh, you got these. Walk in. Any given moment and send the driver."
I... I would just ask to put this on.
The only problem I have is it's random. They'll kick out 10 things. It comes out of a computer. And we're not...
We don't have to pick them.
We don't have to pick them.
Does Great Salt Plains, do they send it in or not?
The random would be, uh, just walk in. So you're going to that.
That's what she does. She kicks it out of the computer.
Okay. Can you guys randomly pick them, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, we randomly pick.
Not can you randomly pick them?
That's why I'm...
But this is a computer, so no one can say that you're picking one.
I don't have a clue whether you guys are supposed to be randomly picking them or not. I know that...
Can you ask Dale about that?
I, uh...
Please, do you think they have to? You can't do that.
And then, then there's time, there's time or two when we send them all. We don't tell them, go that morning, you're all coming down there.
That's the way we've been doing it.
Yeah.
Are we doing it four times a year though?
Yeah.
I, I need to do it.
Yeah.
That was what his, his big thing was, is that it's gotta be a minimum of four years.
I just, the reason I like to do is 'cause it ain't him house, but it's not, nobody can say that-
You got shafted.
You're picking one.
And that's one reason.
And then, then it'll kick out, it may kick out a guy's name four times or personally.
Yeah.
And if that happens, have you done it?
No.
But they're-
But that's why we kinda been sending ours the last two or three times, everybody goes that morning.
But, yeah, and, and that'd be the way, but I mean, this place is way south of him, so it's way up here for us. I mean, and where would they meet him?
They're, wherever, I mean, they can come here to the courthouse, they can go to-
Oh, they'll come up here.
Yes, they will come here.
Yeah, that's thirty cents a mile, man.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's all that it's cost.
'Cause I, what I figured, and what I figured going in, it ain't that much difference in price.
Yeah.
Than you hauling everybody over there.
Would they just come up and test everybody at random?
I don't know.
Whoever they bring out.
Yeah.
You put computers.
It's just, it's just an added expense, if you, I mean, I understand you guys testing everybody, but it's just an expensive test on everybody.
That's true, that, that's right.
I mean, that, that's all that Dale said, he said, you know, that's just an extra expense.
Well, just kind of, kind of covers, keeps you out of hot water.
But this one, I mean, where they send the, the forms into ODOT, they make sure that we're, and, and compliant with federal. I mean, it's like it's, Morgan said, it takes it off you guys' back.
Well, I think ODOT's gonna start changing the, the, or the CDL's gonna change here pretty quick, everybody's been-
What, uh, okay, so it, it kicks however many out on that certain day and that one driver didn't join or he's sick or didn't, in there for work, is there some reasoning on that?
No, I think that's to your discretion.
At my, at me.
If he's actually sick, you'll know he's-
Yeah, okay.
And, and actually, they, they won't know ahead of time, they won't know until I-
I'll be at the time, so we're covered on-
You guys, you guys will know, or the people that you put on, on the list will know that they're coming such and such day. And it will be, yeah, it'll be the day before, but you won't have that list of who is going until that morning, so.
I don't know, we, I don't even know what names until we send them all. But she's the only one that knew what names we regularly checked.
That's in the house.
Yeah, that's-
That's what, I'm, I just league out because of what I'm trying to-
But if they do that thirty cents a mile, they're out of test server when they come.
Yeah, I think we, I think you guys can set up the number of people that you want.
I think they figured ten.
Ten, oh, that'd be-
That's about half your crew most days.
Yeah.
I mean, we figured ten, so.
Yeah.
If you guys wanna look into it, more, we can-
Just take how actual, like, how long we look into it.
I think we'll-
I'll table it until we can discuss it a little bit, I'm gonna table it.
You want it tabled indefinitely or you want it on the next week?
Indefinitely.
I'll say good.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was July the nineteenth, through, I mean, through two thousand and nineteen through twenty, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other chain business?
Maybe with dinner.
I'll say good.
All in favor?
Aye.